Vice President, President, Dean.
The United States of America and the United Republic of Canada. One nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
My name is Karen Tass. I'm President of the Board of Education and I'm right. Eddie Robinson, Secretary.
Michael Poole, Board Treasurer.
Nathan Lewis, Board Trustee.
Rans Williams, Board Trustee.
Darryl B. Joyce, Board Trustee.
Linda Wood, Superintendent.
Debbie Trump, Assistant Superintendent for Administrative Services.
Paula Nicey, Intro, Associate Superintendent for Personal Instruction.
Tambo, Director of Labor and Legal Affairs, sitting in for Joan M. Garrett.
Vice President Yolanda Sliz is excused today. A family business. The first thing on the agenda is the oath of office for Mr. Joyce, Darryl D. Joyce, who is a member of the Board of Education. Mr. Joyce? Would you come around, please? Would you repeat after me, please? I, Darryl Joyce.
I, Darryl Joyce.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
As a member of the Board of Education.
As a member of the Board of Education.
Of South Hill Public Schools.
South Hill Public Schools.
In South Hill, Michigan.
In South Hill, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Well, Ms. Kyra Woodley is an outstanding 12th grade student at University High School Academy. She is also a member of the Junior Optimist Octagon International Club. She is here with a special guest, Ms. Cheryl Temm. Are you here with Temm?
Yes.
Oh, Kyra.
Hi. Hello.
From the J O O I Club to share information regarding her achievements.
Okay.
Would you please take the microphone?
Most certainly.
Thank you, Ms. Temm.
Good evening, everyone. I am the Advisor of the Making a Difference Junior Optimist Club of South Hill and Lake Village. Our Making a Difference Junior Optimist Club was chartered in 2007, and since that time we have had students from the South Hill Public School District to serve at many capacities. We have, at the district level, which would be for the state of Michigan, we have 34 clubs and about 800 members. Our students from this community have served at the district level as what we call Lieutenant Governors, which are area managers, but they've also served as district governors for their organization. And we've had three of them consecutively that have risen to that level of leadership. Over the years, this particular Making a Difference Junior Optimist Club has served the community well in that normally they complete anywhere from 12 to 20 community service projects. They are often recognized as being both an honor club throughout Optimists International, which has over 15,000 members, and sometimes they even make it to being distinguished honor club. One of the most significant accomplishments for us here in this community is that we are here tonight to recognize Ms. Kyra Woodley, who was the first Junior Optimist Octagon International, International Director of our community. Kyra, congratulations. It makes me especially proud this year that Kyra is on the International Board because I am the Governor for the Michigan District this year. So we are a major force and we are a major team. Since Kyra has been a part of Making a Difference, Joyce, she has run service projects on her own. One of the big ones is the International Hunger Relief Project, Super Bowl of Caring. Last year, they served over 4,440 community members and/or students. Over 70 members participated. They raised over $2,000 in funds, and they currently have three members that sit on the board. This is one youth service organization that I am and we should all be very proud of, and they truly represent South Hill Public Schools really well. For Kyra.
I feel privileged to just be here. Being elected, I'm still, I'm still in shock because like I'm just here to serve and like, you know, to be recognized for that, it's just like wow, you know? I really appreciate it, so, you know, not expect it. I just, I like to serve. I liked to start serving as an optimist three years ago, and I never expected, you know, to go through such heights, but always doing things, you know, I'm living, I'm just living, you know?
Thank you.
You have any parents here, Ms. Woodley?
No.
Do you have any parents or relatives here? Fan club?
Yeah, fans.
Would you stand, please, if you're recognized?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Congratulations, Joe. First, we have Ms. Shayna Hodge, South Hill Regional Academic Campus.
Good evening, Board Members. Superintendent Dr. Linda Wood, Central Office Staff and Administrators, South Hill School Staffs, Parents, Students, and Guests. My name is Shayna Hodge, and I am your Student Board Member from South Hill Regional Academic Campus. On Monday, September 22nd, our after-school Wayne State University C2 Pipeline Program began. Students continue to be engaged in homework assistance as well as career and college enrichment from 2:30 until 5:00 PM. This after-school program is implemented Monday through Thursday until June 2015. On Wednesday, September 24th, was Curriculum Night. Staffs and parents have the opportunity to be informed and establish working relationships. In addition, Michigan First was intended to provide information. Mr. Bogers' nine-minute huddle session began Monday, September 29th. Their acronym Huddle stands for Helping Unite Decisions to Dreams, Leadership, and Education. Mr. Bogers, Ms. Tharx, counselors use this time to inspire and focus our young people to make plans about their future. October 3rd, four students were admitted to Bethune University during an onsite admission. Our College Assistance Law at South Hill Regional Academic Campus is transforming into displaying the successes of our current 2015 draft. On Sunday, October 5th, the Community House presented the 24th Annual Student Art Town. I am proud to announce that one of our very own, Khalil Hughes, placed first. On October 6th, Michigan First celebrated its opening day to address everyone's baking needs at South Hill Regional Academic Campus. We are approaching our seventh week where weekly eight different staff members recognize one student who has shown improvement in academics, attendance, and or achievements. Together, we are celebrating what students do right. October 8th, at 9:30 AM, South Hill Regional Academic, Fan Club students went on a field trip to Henry Ford Museum. Students were enriched in the history of education and exposed to American education, Industrial Revolution, American democracy, and civil rights. I hope you were able to attend our 12th Annual Fall College and Career Fair on October 8th. The evening was filled with valuable information, free food, fun, and prizes. Early the following morning, Kennedy Armstrong, Leonard Coleman, Alasia Bridges, and Cy Reno attended a workshop at Wayne State University. The purpose of the meeting was to participate to recap their experience experiences from summer C2 Pipeline Program. Have a good evening and thank you for your time.
Now, we have Ms. Brianna Richardson from South Hill Lake Village High School.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brianna Richardson, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the South Hill Lake Department. After being in school for too much now, I must say our freshmen have done a wonderful job adjusting to high school. Homecoming Week, which was September 22nd through the 26th, was a blast. A lot of students participated in our spirit week, which included dressing up during school, decorating our different class hallways, and also performing in the class dance battle at our gift rally. After all of our festivities, of course, seniors won. They were rewarded with a trophy. Lake Village Student Congress organized our homecoming town showcase, which took place during school hours the day before our homecoming dance. All homecoming coordinators were required to wear formal wear for a pageant round, complete an interview round, and also showcase their talent in front of the school. The show had a great turnout, and all of our money raised and tickets were given to charity. DECA attended various exciting events over this past weekend. Friday, they held a zumba thong dance class entitled "Party in Pink." Three different zumba instructors came out to teach. DECA collected donations for breast cancer from everyone who attended. Students, along with staff members, had a great time, especially knowing they helped raise money to go towards funding of cure. The following day, DECA, along with Lake Village Student Congress, attended a breast cancer walk downtown. Over 30,000 people were in attendance, and both of Lake Village's organizations saved the entire time completing all three miles. Sunday, a group of DECA members completed community service by helping our mayor, Brenda Horns, campaign for Congress. They walked from house to house, providing people with information on why they should vote for her. This Wednesday, we are having PSAT testing for grades 9 through 11. We have successfully sold all of our available slots. Our first parent teacher conference of this school year will be on October 23rd with two different time blocks, 3:00 to 5:00 in six days. We strongly suggest that parents come out to be informed on their students' current academic achievement. National Honor Society will be present at the conferences, asking for donations to UNICEF, which is the United States Children Fund. UNICEF's goal is to see and protect poor children in need. National Honor Society will also put on their Halloween bar on October 24th from 5:00 to 9:00. Students to NHS went around yesterday to drop off flyers in the main offices of all the SBS elementary schools. All children will engage in multiple activities and, of course, trick-or-treat with their South Hill Lake. Children ages 4 to 10 are invited. The seniors are extremely excited for college and eager to know what it's all about. Lake Village will be holding a college fair on November 6th from 6:00 to 8:00. There will be a large variety of colleges in attendance. The following week, we will hold our health fair in the general on Saturday, November 15th from 11:00 to 2:00. Everyone is welcome. Thank you all for your time and have a wonderful night.
And now, we have Ms. Perry Rutledge from University High School Academy.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Erin Rutledge, and I'm the Representative for University High School Academy. This month at the UHSA has been all about getting students on board and ready for the rest of the school year. On September 11, 2014, University held its annual Meet the Teacher Night, in which parents came and simulated the child's joy at the U by traveling from different classes and receiving lectures from teachers. Next, Teacher Day hangs on September 29th. Although the entire school participated, it was even more exciting for the class of 2015 as we took the cap-and-gown pictures. As we reached the end of the card marking on October 9th, everyone has parent-teacher conferences to look forward to on October 22nd and 23rd. This month, UHSA will hold its annual Pink Out, in which students wear pink to spread awareness of October Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Thanks for coming out tonight, and remember, we're nurturing tomorrow's leaders today. Go Eagles!
Right, but not really. Ms. Laura Williams from South Hill High School. Hi there. I'll have to double report six seconds, please. Now, Report of Superintendent, Dr. Linda Wood.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. I am so excited because we have had some exciting weeks during the last part of September and October. During this period of the year, we have many curriculum nights, open houses, football games. We've had a homecoming at both of our high schools so far, and we had our first card marking for high schools. But along with that, we have had the implementation of our math assessment, and as parents in the community, many even heard about our math assessment. In South Hill Public Schools, we assess all of our children at the beginning of the school year in the areas of mathematics, reading, language, and science, and for grades K through 12. So, one of the things that I wanted to share with you is that this past Thursday and the South Hill Sun, there was an article in the paper about our math assessment and the implementation of it. It's in the form of a question and answer, and I think that if you have not read it, I invite you to do that. But if you also have not read it, I'm going to invite you to something. On October 18th, which is this upcoming Saturday, right here in this room, from 9:00 to 11:00, I'm hosting a Coffee and Conversation with the Superintendent, and I look forward to that because I want to talk about the math also. We're going to talk about the math assessment. I want to ask you and allow you to ask those drilling questions that you would like to ask. We're also going to talk about the implementation of our ATACs and our electronic learning platforms. We're going to share with anyone who is available, and that's parents in our community, to learn more about the technology that we've been implementing here in the district. And we also will provide an opportunity for an open forum of questions and answers related to transportation. And I think that many of our parents who are listening, our Board knows, and also many of our parents here, that we have a few little issues with the construction in our city and the transportation with our buses. And so we just want to help you understand what we're doing and how we're working to tighten up the late buses and also eliminate additional problems that may occur. So that's what's happening, and there's much more that I could share, but our young lady shared a whole lot already. We have a full agenda for you this evening, so I'm going to start convincing the conversation that we have prepared. And the first is, I'd like to just share with you that as of last April, we adopted a new strategic plan by our Board of Education, and we're excited about that plan, and we're ready, and we've already started the implementation. I'd like to ask Mr. Mike Boginsky to come to the podium, and Mr. Boginsky is our Lead Evaluator for our implementation of the strategic plan. And one of the things that he's going to provide periodic updates for our Board of Education throughout the course of the year, and in addition to those updates, as we move forward, we're going to make sure that our community, our Board, our parents know the alignment of presentations we're doing for you as they align to the strategic plan. So this evening, there are three goals particularly we're going to hit this evening, and the first goal is related to Goal Number Two of our strategic plan, which is line instructions. The second goal is how we support our buildings and classrooms. And the third goal is related to marketing that we're going to be sharing this evening, as well as Mr. Boginsky will give us a real just thought of the whole process and an update for our Board of Education. Thank you, Mike.
Well, thank you, Dr. Wood. And I just wanted to mention, you were talking about the session you're going to hold with math.
Yes.
The math program, the Achievement Measuring Academic Performance, I think is the acronym, was in our last strategic plan. And I think it speaks well that when we get into these initiatives, we need to take a moment just to remember that it came out of that process that we had done, looking for additional assessments, and knowing that the state doesn't quite know what the next meet-up is going to look like. At least, I would think as a parent of a student in the district, I at least know where my students stand, and I know where they need to put their work emphasis. I want to mention that because it was a strategic initiative at one time, and I think it serves us well. We can go to the PowerPoint now, and what I want to do tonight is, as Dr. Wood mentioned, we adopted, the Board adopted this plan back in April. And as we sit down, and we'll say it again, the whole strategic plan is on the district website if you want to look at the whole thing. We're not going to talk about the whole plan tonight. We're only going to talk about those things that we're going to be focusing on for the next 100 days. You can't do 46 things at once. That's impossible. It doesn't matter what size organization you are, whether you're IBM, General Motors, or whoever, that's too many initiatives going out at one time, so we're going to try to limit that. In the first 100 days, these are the things that we're going to be working on. Now, the process that we have is that once the Board adopted this, it's policy and policy intent, and I want to emphasize those words. What Boards do is we adopt policies, and some of these are intentions, which have not yet been put in place, but this is our strategic way of saying, these are the things that we're focusing on. So, let's see if I can do this right. This is the first, and we're going to run through these kind of rather quickly, and Jackie's going to talk a little bit about marketing, and then we'll come back if there are any questions. These are some things that we believe are strategic initiatives based on the fact that they're not in place currently. One of the things that we talk about is to identify common classroom protocols, practices, and to monitor that. Now, we have, we recognize that all of our schools are different, and at one time, you know, we had in many districts a thing called site-based management. The trend now, because of our current state of our economy and the emphasis on student achievement, is that we're now saying, there are some things that we have to do in common. So we want to make sure that we do that. And some of these protocols I'll share with you in a moment, but these things are basically related to each other, even though they're in different goal areas. We want to train teachers to conduct walk-throughs. That's a new thing, and why would we do that? Well, the reason we would do that is because the research says that when teachers are able to observe other teachers, they learn from that. It becomes a learning experience, and it definitely has an impact on student learning. We're relying very closely on what the research says, on what it takes to improve student learning, and we know that that's the bottom line. The third thing that's listed up there is a thing called instructional rounds, and I want to talk about that a little bit with this diagram. Instructional rounds is a process that was developed at Harvard School of Ed, probably about, well over 10 years ago. And what it says is that we have what we call a process, and, you know, we talk about school improvement, and there's a plan that the state says you have to file once a year. School improvement or improvement of any organization, the student improvement, which is part of our accreditation process, is something that's continuous, that never ends. And the process is more important than anything. And there are three specific areas that we're going to talk about right now. One is the area of curriculum, which is the content, it's the what. Instructional delivery is the how, and it's the thing we have most control over. And finally, the last piece is something called student engagement. Now, when we talk about, I want to go back for just a second, because when we talk about teacher walk-throughs, what we want to do is, we want to do this not for evaluation purposes. In fact, it has absolutely nothing to do with teacher evaluation. What it has to do with is to measure student engagement. All the research, though, and there's a ton of it, that says when students are engaged in their own learning, achievement increases. So that's where we want to go. And when we talk about walk-throughs, we're not talking about walk-throughs for evaluation. That's a personnel HR function. That's something the state requires. And so we're going to start with a couple of schools and just pilot this to see how it works. And the idea will be over the next 100 days, we'll start that process. And you're probably wondering, now, where are the metrics? Well, the metrics really on these goals are at 100%. That's what we're aiming at. We're not saying we're going to go 50, or 60, or 70. We want this to be a district-wide process. Well, we're going to, there's an old saying, it says, "Go slow to go fast." That's what we're going to do. We're going to start off by doing this in a couple of schools, just to see how it goes. And the instrument that we're going to use is one that Advanced Ed uses. Advanced Ed, not to be confused with Advance, they're not even cousins. That's another process. But Advanced Ed is what used to be North Central Association Accreditation, which you are accredited by as a district. It's the same instrument that was used by visiting teens in our buildings, and again, it is a process that does not write down teacher names. The only thing we're interested in is what does student engagement look like in our schools, in our individual schools and across our district? Because we know that if we use that instrument, which by the way has been psychometrically tested, it's a very reliable and valid instrument. It's one of the best out there, and it's available to us because we are members now of Advanced Ed and North Central. So that's, those are three things that I think are important. I want to stress, just to mention, in the middle there, you see a bunch of names. You see Marzano, Haddie, Danielson. Danielson is the researcher who's provided an evaluation process, and it links very well with Advanced Ed's instrument called the ELOP, which is the Environment of Learning Observation Tool. E-L-E-O-P. You got that right, anyway. But that's what we're going to do, and that's where we're going to start. And the idea is that this is a protocol that we would like to have in place in all of our schools over the next two to three years. I'll say it, we'll give ourselves some time to be able to do that. It's going to take time to do this. These are strategic initiatives, and a strategic initiative is something that will be something different. Okay, resource allocation. One of our goals is to guide schools for analysis programs. We spend a lot of time looking at student achievement. We have individual programs that we have put in place over the years, and one of the things that our strategic plan calls for is that we will do something called program analysis, program development and analysis. In other words, we have a product that we've purchased, and I'm not going to even provide an example, you can think of one in your head. The question will be, how is it working? Is it providing the results we're looking for? And we're going to try to bench- And we're going to try to benchmark this and provide some metrics for you that actually give you some idea of where we are in the process, because it's important that we just don't say, well, a lot of people, or a lot of things, or some, or many. We're going to try to target these with specific initiatives. And one of the things that we know is that a Board of Education, a policymaking board, when you put a strategic plan in place, you want to know what the results look like, and you'd like some metrics to go with that. The last one there is reviewing positions of longevity and length. One of our strategic goals is to look at something called succession planning. The other day, I heard that in the next five years, we will need 30,000 truck drivers, 20,000 electricians, 15,000 plumbers. Now, that's based on looking at the workforce. Those numbers are just not dreamed up. It's looking at the workforce and looking at the average age, length of service, and also looking at what experience we've had, when do people retire, and so forth. And so we want to be ready. We know there's a bubble in the system, and we want to be ready to make sure that we are developing folks to take positions, particularly in leadership positions as we go through this. So that's where we're going to start. And hopefully, all of these things that we've just talked about will be something that we'll come back to you on. Now, let's talk about marketing, because if you're going to do all these things, you want to be able to tell your story. Okay? All right. Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Wajinski. Good evening.
Good evening.
So under Goal Six, we're looking at expanding and refining the marketing of district programs. And so we're starting with Objective One, which is research. So everything in the district is based on research. Everything that Mr. Wajinski spoke of is based on a foundation of research, because you don't know where you're going, and you don't know if you've arrived if you don't lay a benchmark in research. So we're going to start with an in-depth telephone survey of approximately 400 respondents. And we're looking at a mix of parents from SPS, from charter schools, and from surrounding school districts. The survey will incorporate validated embedded questions, and it will help us to develop our communications plan and set the framework for what we're doing, help us with our outreach, and benchmark where we are in terms of perception. How does the community see SPS? What does the community want from SPS? And what is going on with our competition? And so that's what we're doing under research. The information that we will receive will lead into Objective Two, which is planning. And the planning is the important stage. It's where we develop a comprehensive communications plan that shapes what we're doing. And to give you an example, if the survey indicates that parents want more information on outcomes than curriculum, then that's where we will focus our communication. Just like you saw the MAP article that came out, parents want to know what programs we're using and what the outcomes are, and that's why we did that piece. And so the research will allow us to plan what it is we're saying. It also will allow us to know what we're messaging. We may think we have an idea, but we really don't. You know, when you're in the house, you think you know everything about the house, but you have to go outside and find out what it is that people want, what do they desire. And that informs our messaging and it informs our planning. And it will also inform what we do for our winter enrollment campaign, our student enrollment campaign, which we launched in January of this year. And then finally outreach, while we're doing this, we're ramping up our outreach. We've been working with the MICE, our update. And yesterday, I sent out some information through that, and I believe I saw an increase in the amount of parents that are getting emails. And so we want to update and strengthen the number of people that we're reaching, not only through our basic communications materials, but through our media outreach, our own media real estate such as social media, our TV station, and our radio station. And part of this will be revisiting our PR team, our district-wide PR team comprised of teachers and administrators. So we'll be doing that real soon and looking at putting together a student marketing team as well.
Okay. And that all. If you have some questions or comments, now, take them. It's called wait time. All right.
Who will this marketing team be?
Sorry?
The marketing team you were talking about?
Oh, go ahead.
Several years ago, we had administrators and teachers who were interested in marketing. And so it would be comprised of people in the district that have a vested interest and success in the district, and administrators.
Should mention, I just want to maybe emphasize this, if you have a question about this. When we talk about the MAP program, one of the ways that got us interested in that is that we did a project, I think it was focus groups a couple of years ago, and we invited in, these were parents of charter schools.
Charter students and all of these.
Our parents. And we discovered that some of our neighbors were using this, and the parents that were there during our interviews were talking about it. And what I, they said, for the first time, I understand where my child is, and I understand what it is they have to do. And so that is how we got interested in that process. And I want to emphasize one other thing, too, is that we do test three times a year, and it's online testing. And kids actually say they like it, some kids do, which is really interesting. I mean, when's the last time you heard that? But parents really do say that they understand, too. The data that comes from those three assessments, we go September, January, Dr. Wood, and then May, right? So we get baseline, middle of the year, end of the year, and we can map progress. And or we also have, a byproduct of this, is a tremendous amount of data that teachers have that they can use in the classroom to look at what kinds of interventions they can and should use. And it really does take us down the road of what we call personalizing our educational program. And we think that is where we want to go eventually with this, as we move through these processes, as they all kind of come together. Because, you know, the bottom line is student learning. And unfortunately, it is a test score, but one of the things that we're emphasizing here is what we call multiple assessments, because you would not buy any product or service by looking at just one criterion. You would look at different aspects of a product or service before making a decision, which is what parents do all the time. We're living in an era of choice. And there's nothing we can do about it at this point, except take it on and look at how we can better communicate what is available in the district for parents and students. Okay?
I wanted to just add, for clarification and just to hand, I thank you, Mike, because you've been a tremendous resource here in the district over the past few years, because whenever you're doing work, it's always important, as Jackie indicated, to have that outside lens, to help each keep asking those strategic questions, pushing the envelope. And sometimes you push back. But at the same time, it's that kind of energy that's required in the process. He also talked about Advanced Ed and Charlotte Danielson, and the importance also of the alignment that's happening in our district, which is critical, that we continue to align, make sure we refine, make sure we tighten, make sure we're doing all the things that are important. And as the board has always said, as we do these things, we live within our means. And so we're continuing doing that. He also talked about research practices, and best research practices, and that's one of the things we're proud of in this district, because, Mike, it's always been a part of our walk as we start to unfold and to implement and to refine these research practices. And on top of that, he always gives this as a team here in the district. And at this time, I'd like to just introduce to the board and to the community some of the key leaders in this strategic plan implementation piece. Mrs. Lightsey, would you stand? Mr. Chat, Mrs. Truss, Ms. Newberry was not here this evening, Alma Dean, Holly Savinsky, and Jackie Robinson, our key leaders. And Marcia Williams also, she's not here this evening. Our key leaders in this whole plan of strategic plan implementation. So I just wanted to make sure that you all knew who they were right now. Thank you so much for your leadership.
Thank you.
And the last thing that Mike said, I'm just going to keep reinforcing, the metrics. Bringing the data, ensuring you see the results, make sure the numbers are right. That's why we have Plank Moran here this evening. But those are all important pieces as we move this district through turbulent times. And when I say that we're doing fine, but we have, there's a future ahead, we have to just keep making sure we're in alignment with. So thank you so much, Mr. Wajinski.
Yeah, I want to thank you, and also thank members of the core team, because, and you kept, every time I'd say, you'd mention the fact that, yes, I intend to externally evaluate. And so, you know, we'll go with you for a while. But in the end, it will be pretty tough, because we want to make sure that we accomplish these things, because they're important, as you said, they're research-based. And the bottom line are our students, our children. And that's the bottom line, and you can never, ever forget that. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
When you talk about testing, you brought back memories of the Lifeform program. And I recall that when I stopped using tests as a method of determining where a student was at, as punishment, grading device, and they discovered that it was useful to them as a learning tool, they just loved it. They did so well, and they improved. Test people was a very good instrument. So I recognize what you're talking about.
Okay. Thank you. The next thing still under my report, I'd like to announce to the community, you know, Southfield Public Schools is a tremendous district. And we have always, under the leadership of Dr. Robinson, and we move into, under my leadership, striving for excellence and leading. And so we are hosting on November 12, the Oakland County School Board Association meeting for our school board members and other school board members here in the county. And I just want to share that we'll be highlighting our district while we're providing the meeting and dinner question. But I also wanted to just compliment the leadership of our board and the leadership here in the district. So we'll keep moving forward. Two more things that I'd like to share. On November 15, and I really want our community and our staff and our students to attend, is our 2014 Health and Wellness Fair. It will be at Southfield Laser Room from 11 to 2. We'll have health fit screening, we'll have dental, flu shots, weight loss tips, blood pressure screening, massage chair, just many different things, so that we as a community can just continue the efforts that we currently do have in place to help promote health and fitness. And with that said, I am very excited and very pleased, because we're putting together a new team to help lead health and fitness in our district, support our students. And I think our board members and community can remember about two years ago, we did some redesigning with our athletic leadership, because we wanted to make sure that our middle and high school programs were in alignment, that we were providing more services to our kids. And that has improved. But we want to take it to another level. And so with that, I'd like for our new athletic director for Southfield Public School to come to the podium, and our two new employees that will be working with her, join her, so that she can begin to introduce. And we're going to be sharing updates along the way of this new redesign and effort to complement K-12 athletics, physical fitness, and health.
Thank you, Dr. Wood. Good evening, everyone. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Anika McEvan. I was serving as the athletic director at Southfield High School. And due to my recent promotion, will now be serving the entire district of Southfield. And I'm very excited about that opportunity to give all of our children, and community residents for that matter, what I believe they are all deserving of. My students are Southfield Public School students, and so I really do truly look at every student as if they are mine, and try to give them exactly what I would expect someone to give to my own children. With that being said, I just want to share with you a few goals that my team will lay out for this year, and that I expect everyone to hold us accountable to, and that I look forward to bringing, updating the board as well as the community on as we move forward. Our first area of focus is consistency. We want to make sure that the policies and procedures that are in effect at one school will be seen at all of our schools, that at the high school, the middle school, and eventually elementary level as well. Secondly, we want to focus on parity of programming and opportunities. And when I say parity, I want to stress that doesn't always mean equality. What that means is that every student will have equal access to the opportunities that we provide in our district, and that our programs that we offer at each of our schools will be reflective of that particular community. So for example, while we offer soccer at Southfield Laser Room High School, for example, at this time, we don't offer it at Southfield High School. What we do is we offer other programs that are more responsive to the needs at Southfield High School. But all students in both schools have equal access to those opportunities. Third is growth and expansion. We definitely want to continue our stride to improving those programs offered at our lower levels. We, two years ago, made some changes at the middle school level that although initially were different, I believe have been highly successful and well-received. And we want to continue to expand on the programs that we can offer at the middle school level. We're also with some additional staff, excited to be able to bring some programs for our elementary school level. Maybe not at the breadth that we offer at the middle school and high school, but definitely ways for those elementary students to get engaged and be introduced to healthy living life style. With that, we do want to continue to try and see where we can add additional sports at our high school program, being strategic in that effort, making sure that we explore opportunities that the community says they're interested in, find out if they are really interested in them, and if they are, figure out ways that we can use our community's resources to bring those to our students. A prime example is recently, a parent approached me about a bowling club, and I, of course, said that we would be interested. So we're looking for some partnerships to put it out there, base on community participation fees, then we'll move forward possibly with that program or others. And I mention that because I do encourage parents, if you're interested in providing opportunities for your children, that you seek us out and share that with us, so that we can explore the possibility of providing that. And then final, just ways to create additional opportunities for participation. We want to find other ways for more students within our school system to be involved in our athletic program, and not necessarily as student athletes. There's opportunities to be managers, there's opportunities to be statisticians, you know, student trainers, things like that. And so we want to look at how we can do that, so that more people are touched by what we do. And then finally, we want to increase our reach. We want our student athletes to become ambassadors in the community. So we want to see them out and involved. We want to see our high school students giving back and servicing the younger students in the community. We want to participate in community activities, and we want you to know who we are, not that we're just students that live in the community, but we are student athletes representing your high school that you invest so much in. So with that, I want to introduce my team, who I'm very excited to have aboard. I want you to know these two gentlemen went through a very intense, two-tiered interview process. We had over 30 interested candidates that responded to our call for our open positions. And the two that we selected were Mr. Gary Winston to my far right. Gary will be placed at Southfield High School at his home base, and will continue to serve middle school programs and elementary programs as well. To my immediate right is Mr. Brent Thomas, who will have at his home base, Southfield Laser Room High School. And they will serve as our athletic event coordinators. I want to also share, before I let them speak, that we were very intentional in the selection process when we selected these two, you know, young men. We went out and interviewed all 30 candidates, narrowed that down to a pool of about eight, narrowed that eight pool down to about six who were invited in for a final interview. And they're going to highlight some things, but I want to make sure I stress some things about them as well. Gary's background, in addition to the athletics, is very familiar with ATT, MME. He was actually a testing coordinator in his previous position. And so we're looking for him to give, to lend his expertise as we expand the student part of our student athlete program here in Southfield High School. And Mr. Brent Thomas, who's an experienced athletic director and excellent at building community connections, has a lot of community contacts, is actually a Southfield High School graduate. So we want to use his connections and expertise to expand our reach within the community. So with that, Brent, to my left. community connections, has a lot of community contacts, is actually a Southfield High School graduate. So we want to use his connections and expertise to expand our reach within the community. So with that, Brent, you want to go first?
First of all, I'd say thank you, good evening. As Anika said, I'm a product of Southfield Schools. I attended Bray Little League Elementary School, Leaning Middle School, and I graduated from Southfield High School. I then went on to attend Jordan University, where I achieved my bachelor's in business finance. Once I returned back to Southfield, I've been involved in athletics for the last 20 years. I've been either a coach, the last eight years I've been involved as an athletic director. Athletics is my passion, and I'm working with young people, so I'm really looking forward to working this job, and can't wait to get started. One of the biggest things I like to focus on is character development. Of course, I want the kids to win on the field, but my biggest thing is winning off the field as they progress in their lives. So, I'm really excited to get involved with that. And I just want to ensure and support the fact that they're student athletes, they're students first, and athletes come second. And I'd just like to thank you for getting to have this opportunity to come back home to Southfield and work this job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm just extremely excited to do this position. I started off, got my undergraduate in industrial engineering at the University of Michigan. But just through my path and decision, it led me back to education, which is obviously my roots in my family, that we stress education so much. And it led me to go back to Wayne State University to get my master's in sports administration, because this is my passion. I love working with youth, I love athletics, I've always been an athlete my whole life. And I just wanted to find something, my passion pretty much. And this is what I, this is what I came up with, but this is what I've been dreaming come true, for me to be in a position, because I love to just help children, and I want to just take them to the next level. And just to piggyback, what Brent was just talking about, we're part of the student athlete. I mean, that student comes first, so we just have to make sure that our students have the grades to go to college, even if it's not to be as an athlete, as a student, and to be successful and graduate. So that's just one of my main goals. Like I said, I'm extremely excited to be here. So, thank you.
I should say before you walk, that I am very excited also. And I have to share that I had a few coaches come to me, and they said, "Doc, are you sure?" I said, "I am sure." And so, in any event, I'm so pleased with the team. I know we're leading again on untraveled territory about a design for implementing tremendous sports and tremendous health and fitness for our kids, K-12. And I believe that this is the team that will lead and provide that model. I'm very pleased. So with that said, come and meet your board of education. With that said, I have concluded my report for the evening, and I'm going to turn it now over to Ms. Trimp, who will address and share why we have many children in our audience today.
Good evening. Tonight, we have Katrina Peruzzi and her crew from Champions. Here's Jen, they brought a bunch of children with them today to do a presentation for you and just let you know how the before and after school care is going.
Thank you for the opportunity to be able to come and share. We're always usually here cheering on the Southfield Public Schools at Champions, but we thought what better way to share with the community and the district, as well as the families, about what Champions truly does. Because we are more than just a latchkey service. We believe in partnering with the district, as well as enhancing their educational experience. So we wanted to share with you, we're getting ourselves together, sorry. We wanted to share with you a glance into the day of a champion, and what, what children really experience in our programs on a daily basis in our before and after program. I know as board members, it's probably really hard to get out, and so we wanted to bring it to you. And we brought some special friends for them to share with you what they do in the school district, ones from each school. And they also have special gifts to present to the board. So, so our first slide is from Bernie. My friend is Bernie. Come on over here, Bernie, friend.
Hi, my name is Courtney, I'm from Bernie, and I'm in the seventh grade. Bernie Champion Program Peace Pack. In Bernie Champion Program, we treat people with respect. This means listening to others and using our hands to ourselves, and speaking as positive about, about each other. We'll treat each other how we like to be treated. In Bernie's Champion Program, we care about each other. This means we treat each other as a member of our own family. We show each other we can care about playing together, and sharing, and helping each other out, and being respectful to each other. In Bernie's Champion Program, we use conflict resolution. This means we talk about our problems with each other. We practice and participate. And Bernie's no bullying is known in preschool.
So with our, Ms. Courtney came, has been with us for an extended period of time. She started with us at Aver and has moved over to Bernie. And with this program, we do a Do Right Crew as a character development program. And not only is she sharing with you a peace pact that they do, but they also do character development, serving their community, and really learning about being an active participant in their community. Our next slide, it's from Amber. Oh, thank, I can do this.
My name is Erin Edwards, from Aver Elementary. I'm going to talk about the nature of the project. We are painting, making, using watercolor and other paints, and hammering to make the pictures.
The what's this picture?
Uh, ham, and a hammer to make, to make the pictures. We also use straw to glue the watercolor in the shape of the tree. Um, we, um, we went outside, and we got, and we gathered these, and, and we used them for the project.
And our next one is Black and White.
My name is Elena. I attend Champions at McIntyre Elementary School. I enjoy snack attack activities. You can play with your food and eat it too. We made apple dolls. We did a marshmallow and made taffies. We also made s'mores and shared them with our friends. We even made s'mores for you.
And on the card, they say, "You're s'more than a board member." So these pictures represent what they're doing in the activity.
Thank you very much. You're a s'more than a board member. Wow. For those of you who wonder, this is two marshmallows, some mercy chocolate, and a Graham cracker. First of all, for tonight. Beautiful.
The next one is Thompson, and this is our Sports Zone program.
Good evening. My name is Janelle. David, and I am in the fifth grade. I attend Champions at Thompson K-8 International Academy. The thing I like most about Champions is Sports Zone. We do things like have relay races, yoga, and my personal favorite is playing sports. We learn team building skills and have good sportsmanship.
Our next one is Vandenberg. We have additional clubs that we offer to children.
My name is Erica, and I am from Vandenberg Champions. We are doing clubs. We have art, jewelry, building, top secret, book, sport, sport and fitness, and character building clubs. I like how they are exciting, and you don't know what's going to happen. My favorite ones are art, jewelry, and sport and fitness clubs. In jewelry clubs, they glue the beads. In art clubs, we do different art projects for art. For building, we build different things, like ramps, ramps and houses. For book club, we read a chapter, a chapter book, and we talk about it. When we do a, when we do top secret clubs, it could be a cooking, sewing, and other things. Sport and fitness, we do different sports and fitness activities. Sometimes we do music. For character building, we do a lesson in how we can be better people, and also do, also be a bucket filler. Thank you.
Next, we have Nick Arser, our Read Right Now Literacy Program.
Hi, my name is Kamora Miller. And we do journal prompts, and we curate journal prompts. And we have John's Journal Helpers. And we have a book club. And the books of the challenge is All My Honors. And we have pen pals, and my pen pal name is Mantrill. And that's all my other names. And my favorite game is Ship Shake.
Next, we have Bray's Takes the Challenge.
Hi, my name is Shandy Baggy, and I'm a school at Bray's Elementary School. I am representing the Takes the Challenge activity area, which consists of homework assistance, reading and writing. All of the activities that we have done, such as picture class, hand draw the community posters, sign language, pool ball, team scramble, and what's in our, what's in our hands, are activities that help us to develop diversity, awareness, practice using literacy skills and create, and creative thinking skills, while developing an understanding of how we can be a positive impact on our community.
Next, we have Stevenson Imagine That.
Hi, my name is Shania McAdoo, and I am in the fifth grade at Stevenson Elementary School. At Champions, my favorite thing to do is make tissue pla, tissue paper flowers and construction paper flowers in the Imagine That area. At Champions, I like to help the other kids to do things that I do, or to help them.
So that's a glance into the day of Champions, partnering with the district to really make a positive impact into your community. And they have special gifts to, to supply each of you, so you have something, a little bit of Champions around your office, you know, wherever you're at. With all the wonderful signatures. That's a special basketball. It's gonna be worth your money someday. So I just want to thank you so much, and thank you for our families for supporting us, as well as being active participants within your child's education, and allowing them to be here today. I know it's probably pushing their best time, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, at this time...
Are there any parents here that would like to stand up? Parents, parents?
Thank you so much for coming out. Thank you for doing, we love you.
You can go do your homework or go do school.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to introduce Diane Wells and Amanda Hartzel from the auditing firm Plant Moran, to give the presentation on our fiscal year 1314 audit.
Well, a little taller, we're, we're not as cute, and you don't have, our gift, he was a clean audit opinion. So first of all, I want to thank the board for the opportunity to be here tonight. We view this as the final close of our, our audit process, which starts in June. And we put about 400 hours into looking at testing balances, testing transactions, reviewing supporting documentation, we confer with outside parties, and we have discussions with various district personnel, and we test for certain, certain compliance with laws and regulations. So virtually all our work is done here at the district. And prior to the start of the fiscal year, we start the process, and then Debbie and her team close out the, the June 30th year end, and then we come back in August and do a final check on all the balances. Just so you, so you know, we as an audit firm have to adhere to a very, some strict rules and regulations. In fact, we, we are audited once every three years as a part of our peer review process. And that's disclosed as, as a matter of, of public record. So, the objective of a financial audit from independent auditors is to issue an opinion on the financial statements. So there are actually four things in your, your packet here. One is your main audit report. And as I said, I'm happy to tell you tonight that we did issue an unqualified, or what is known as a clean opinion. And that's really the highest level of assurance that we, as auditors, can provide on set of financial statements. In addition, I want to comment that we found the, the condition of the books and records to be in very good condition. And in order for us to issue that clean opinion, we did not have to propose any adjustments to be made to, to the books and records as they were presented to us. So these financial statements are going to be submitted to the Association of School Business Officials. And Southfield is, is the only, as we see, you've got to know me. Southfield has received the certificate from ADFO for over 34 years. In fact, we are adding them up on the presentation, which is, is quite remarkable. So in order to, to meet that, to get that award, you have to, the district's financial statements go with, go through a more extensive process. And just to give you a point of reference, I believe last year, there were four or five districts in the state that received that award. Southfield by far is the, the longest running. So this year's financial statements, June 30th, 2004, will be submitted once again for, for the ASLO award. We have every reason to believe that it'll be year 35. In addition to the, the main audit report, there's what's called the federal single audit. And that's where we test for compliance with laws and regulations. And that's an important report to you, because the district received over $7 million of federal money. And this, this report goes to the, to the state and also to the agencies that have awarded you those grants. And I'm happy to report that we found no noncompliance with any laws and regulations. So also, that is also a clean report. I also, in your packet is a letter to the board. There's, there contain some informational items, talks about our audit process in a little more detail. And tonight, there really isn't anything that I feel like need to bring to your attention with respect to that. Before, we're gonna go through some of the kind of key financial numbers in the audit report, but I, I thought, you know, because you have a lot of information, additional information in your audit report, I found it interesting, some of the, the financial perspectives over the last 10 years. In fact, in the back schedule, some of those are, are reporting over the, the last 10 years. So from 2005 to 2014, a 10-year period, the, the general fund revenue went from 141 million to 104 million, a decline of $37 million, or 26%. And that's not without accounting for any inflation factor. So, you know, in, in, in those 10 years, not only did your revenue decline, but also some expenses went up at a faster rate than inflation. So like healthcare premiums, we all know the story on that. And retirement costs, which retirement, the retirement percentage has doubled in the last 10 years. So as a, as a point of reference, I found it interesting that although the revenue decreased 26%, the instructional expenditures or direct classroom expenditures only decreased 15%. And that's in a 10-year period from 71 million to 60 million. So this tells me that, we know you've had to cut, but it also tells me that you've been able to keep those cuts out of the classroom to the extent you, you could do that. And I know you've had to make some tough decisions, financial decisions, and I commend you for, for stepping up to those. And I'd like to think it's over, but we all know costs continue to, to go up. And we're gonna show a little bit here, your fund balance over the last few years and where you're projected to go for 2015 on these slides here. But with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Amanda, who, Nate is sick today. Nate's been working with the district for, I think, the last eight years. And Amanda's been working with the district for the last four, so, so this was her opportunity to help here, so.
So as Diane mentioned, this is the certificate for the ASLO award from the 2013 financial statement. And then diving right into the numbers, so this is the balance sheet for the governmental funds. This is a snapshot of the assets and liabilities of the district as of June 30th, 2014. And you can see the general fund is the main operating fund of the district. And then we have a few other funds. The funded project fund is where the grants are accounted for. And the special revenue fund includes the food service fund and the expendable trust fund. And then the debt service fund, this year only includes the 2007 debt service fund as the 2003 and 2004 were closed out this year. So looking specifically at the general fund numbers, there's 33 million of assets, which this includes 26.7 million in cash and investments, and 5.5 million in state aid receivable, which is a July and August state aid payment. The liabilities for the general fund are $12 million, and the majority of this includes 3.7 million in accounts payable, and 5.9 million in accrued payroll, which is the payroll earned with forging interest but paid after year end. And then assets minus liabilities gives us fund equity. And as you can see, it's broken out into various categories. I'll just go through each one briefly as a refresher. So the first one, non-spendables, is the amount for which cash has already been spent. So this includes inventory and prepaid, and you can see it's $50,000 for the general fund. Restricted is amounts that are legally restricted, so this would be things like the debt fund. The assigned amounts are amounts that are earmarked for use by management but are not legally restricted. So as of June 30th, there is approximately $825,000 of accumulated severance and compensated assets liabilities, $3 million in anticipated tax appeals, $417,000 in featured capital improvements, and then 14.9 million of budgeted fund use, or budgeted use of fund balance in the next year. So this is the amount that was adopted in the original budget for the 1415 year. And then we arrive at total fund equity of 21 million. This next slide shows the combined statement of revenue and expenditures and changes in fund balance for the governmental funds. Looking at the general fund, we'll go into more detail, but revenue was 87.3 million, expenditures 93.2 million. And that factoring in the other financing sources gives us to a net change in fund balance of a decrease in about 5.9 million this year. Adding that to the beginning fund balance, again, we arrive at the ending fund balance of 21 million. So this slide shows the breakdown of where the revenue came from for the 14 year. Just to note, this is both the general fund and the funded project fund. So total revenue was 94 million. And as you can see, the state foundation allowance makes up a majority of this amount. And this is based on the simple formula of blended pupil count times foundation allowance. For the 2014 year, the blended pupil count was 7,070, and the foundation allowance was 10,851, which arrives at approximately 76 million and also 76% of the total revenue for the year. So the main takeaway here is the foundation allowance makes up the majority of the revenue for the district, but there is very little control or influence that you have on that. This slide shows the breakdown of expenditures, again, for both the general fund and the funded project fund. Total expenditures were 100 million. And as the school is in the service industry, it's not a surprise that the majority of expenses are salaries and benefits. Just for reference, the percentage of the total for salaries and benefits in the 2013 year was 74%. So this increased 4% and mostly that's due to the fringe benefits, specifically the increase in the retirement cost. So one of the questions we're often asked is how much fund balance is enough? This slide shows one way to look at it, by taking the fund balance as a percentage of the total expenditures. So as we saw on the first few slides, the general fund, fund balance for the year was 21 million divided by total expenditures of 93.2 million. It's approximately 22 and a half percent of total expenditures for the year. And if you want to look at it another way, this fund balance of 21 million fund the district's operations for approximately 38 school days out of 171 school a year. As you can see, this is well above the state average excluding Detroit of 9.6%. However, when we factor in the budgeted use of fund balance for the 15 year, that's 14.9 million, it quickly declines to the 21 million of 6.2% of total expenditures.
I add a comment on this one. So the state average is a year behind at 9% because we don't have this year's numbers. And from what I can tell from other, my experience with other districts, the state average is gonna go down. Because it's just the districts that I think have had excess expenditures in this year, so.
And then the last slide we have, this kind of shows the overall trend of the school districts in Michigan and the problem they're facing of declining student enrollment. As I mentioned, the 2014 blended pupil count was 7,070, which is a decrease of 1,483 students from the 2010 year. And relating this to foundational, for the 14 year, this is a lost revenue of approximately $16 million. And not to end on a bad note, but this is something that we can't help talk about, is it has a direct impact on the district's revenue. So that is all we have for you. We welcome any questions at this time.
Overall, like I said, good audit report, the, the books were in good shape. And in fact, one year a month earlier than we have been in the past. So we've been, we've done that one job preparing for it. And I know they pushed us to get it done earlier. And I'd like to see you get it away, be done with it, but if they really get them, let's drive.
It's a little distress, that contrary to what you hear on your television set, since I came on this board, the funding for our schools has dropped almost half of what it was 10 years ago. And, and it's only because of the genius of our superintendent, and I say that well, and Miss Trent, that we are able to hold our head above water. And also by the contributions of our staff, our remarkable staff, who have taken a cut in their salary, so that our children could continue to get their education. And I think that that is a disgrace, not for us, we haven't done it, but for the state of Michigan, that our teachers have to take a cut in order to support education. It's just a national disgrace and a state disgrace. And I want you to remember that next time you see one of those commercials on television about how well our schools are doing. Southfield schools are doing well, but it's only through the sacrifice of the people who worked there. Remember that I'm not gonna force them to vote.
We'd also like to thank the partnership that we've developed over the years, those individuals that support students here in Southfield.
Spread the word, tell people what, what it's really like here. Tell them how good we are and why. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd also like to have Kate Dankovich stand up, so we can publicly thank her. Kate is our Director of Finance, and she does the lion's work of the, or lion's share of the work on this audit. And like Diane said, she pushed it up a month earlier and they brought it home. So I just want to say thank you.
The rest of my report is in the consent agenda. I just wanted to add, as we get into a flow, that both of these reports were aligned to our strategic plan of goal number seven, which is related to resources, and goal number four, which is related to ways in which we can support our buildings. And Champions is truly a way in which we support our programs, our buildings, and our parents and students.
Dr. Wood, I want to say thank you so much. We've worked, we've been asked to do this for a number of years, the board. What she's doing is, if you look at your strategic plan when you get a chance, she's now tying our agenda, that you see here each regular board reading, to our strategic plan, so that you are aware of what we're doing, what our goals are, how we are implementing the process to make sure we accomplish our goals, working with Mike and the team that you presented earlier, to ensure that we meet our goals, we plan what, and we implement them, we monitor, and if for some reason after you, and Jim, we call it three calls, but I would say right side, like we've done with our FA department and many other departments. That's what we will do. As you, as I said last month, we don't compete against other districts, because other districts don't look like us. So please understand that. We have various ways and various means to see, to test our students, see where they are. And if your student is hungry, and has passion, gumption, and a quick mind, and wanna learn, it doesn't matter what school it goes to, because they're gonna do that. So continue to support Southfield Public Schools. And we appreciate the support that Mike, Plant Moran, our partners, and everyone here within the Southfield School District is doing to help move onward and up.
Good evening. My name is Mrs. Lightsey, and I'd like to introduce George Chatz. He's gonna do a presentation tonight. He is our Director of Secondary Education on the Technology Readiness Infrastructure Grant, which is aligned to Goal Two, which is instruction, and Goal Three, technology.
Thank you, Associate Superintendent Lightsey. Good evening to the Board of Education, Superintendent Wood, and also the community. As Ms. Lightsey said, part of our strategic plan is to look at how we work deeply and strategically integrate instructional technology into our classrooms and our instructional practice. One of the things I'm gonna talk about this evening is what is called the TRIC Grant, is the Technology Readiness Infrastructure Grant. There are actually two components to this grant. I'm only gonna focus on one this evening. In terms of what the focus of the TRIC Grant is, is two-fold. One is the ability to help districts either develop or improve their technology infrastructure. The part that we're gonna focus on this evening are grant funds we receive from the state and federal government, as it's related to a second focus, which is to provide opportunities for targeted PD regarding blended learning or using technology into instruction. And also how we help our teachers in our schools to build capacity to implement best practices with regard to technology as we move to next generation assessments, realign curriculum, and so on and so forth. And so, as this Associate Superintendent Lightsey said, this aligns on Goal Two, instruction. It really is targeted to Goal Three with regards to technology, and how we integrate the use of technology to support our curriculum programs, our instruction, and our assessments. With that strategic goal, again, to investigate how we use technology to really push the envelope with our students and our staff, and how we look at ultimate approaches to traditional classroom delivery. And so, part of this grant that we received from the state of Michigan went to actually eight schools, and with the goal by 2015, 2016, to span to our remaining schools. So we really wanted to make sure that we had a cross-section of representing the district at all grade levels. As you'll see, we have two K-5 buildings, we have four K-8 buildings, and we have two high schools represented in this year's 2014, 2015 cadre. These are the schools that received the first round of TRIC funds to implement the blended learning PD. And so what those funds do is for each school, it provides money as to, for teachers to complete a blended learning readiness assessment. This is a specific set of trainings and modules where teachers can become certified in blended learning best instructional practices. I spoke with our regional coordinator today, Mr. James Winslow, and he already said that Southfield schools is well ahead of the game in terms of other districts, other school districts within our region, which includes Oakland, McComb Counties, Wayne, and several other areas, in terms of teachers have already begun, if not completed, these modules. We have an internal goal of 75%. Obviously, we would like to see that to be 100% in each of the buildings that participate. Also, these funds provide the participation in professional development activities for teachers to go to McCall Conference or Mission Association Computer Users and Learning, to go to specialized workshops like Google Training or Google Docs, Google Apps. It also provides incentives for teachers to implement instructional technology into their instructional practice. And what we mean by that is teachers that go above and beyond completing these modules, participating in PD voluntary and otherwise. We're not talking hundreds of dollars, or maybe it's something as simple as a $25 gift card for iTunes to buy some apps. Just some things to, you know, to again, prime the pump. And really, the ultimate goal is to create model demonstration schools, where the knowledge that's gained by teachers that complete these courses in these eight schools can be shared, not just with schools that have not participated, but also with teachers maybe in other buildings. Because every building has a little bit of a slightly different emphasis. And I can say, actually, last night I had the pleasure to attend Vandenberg Elementary, where they had a dine-in TRIC dinner. And that was their way to bring in teachers into, into the training. Some had already begun, but they had 18 teachers, staff members, that participated in that evening. evening, each of them committing to completing the, the spoken sequence of training. So every, so every building's doing something different to incentivize. The whole point, though, is to create these models and these demonstration schools. And then finally, the funding does allow for us, again, I get permission from finance from the superintendent, for some niche specialized technology products. These are things that maybe would not come out of a normal technology expenditure. I'm not going to, you know, guarantee Google Glass, but we're talking about pushing the envelope of how we use instructional technology, sort of like Google Glass eliminates barriers for students that maybe they're homesick, they're on long-term leave or homebound. Well, you have students in classrooms put on glasses so they can videotape or livestream instruction going right on. So we're talking about these types of technologies and maybe iPad stands so that students can use their iPads that have purchased to, you know, create movies, you know. So that's what these types of funds are for. And so this round this year, the school district has received approximately $37,000 to implement this. So again, everything that's being done in these buildings are not coming out of the general fund, they're being grant funded. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, George. That concludes my report.
Okay, at this time, Mr. Wood, I don't believe you have any more, but I'll open.
No, good evening. Report for Human Resources is contained in tonight's consent agenda.
That concludes Dr. Wood.
Thank you, Dr. Wood.
Thank you.
And we're going to pass upon the pit start report this evening. And I'd like someone to open please the consent agenda, which includes personnel report, and minutes for four meetings in September, which we have.
I know that we will open Report Number 5312 and a consent agenda.
Okay. Could we call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes? Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. School?
Yes.
That's not yet. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And, I'm sorry, I should have asked for questions. Were there any questions? Report Number 5313, could I have someone to open Report 5313 before it?
I know that Order 5313, recommendations for purchase ACT testing materials.
Call for the vote. And we have any questions first?
Oh, I have a question. And I wanted to just give a little explanation. Allison Zunsky, did you come to the podium and just give a little brief update and overview of why we wish to do this?
The best mathematicians.
Not sure about that. Thank you.
Don't thank too.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Wood, and audience. What we are doing is asking for the prep of the test material sets pre, are pre-purchased to be ACT testing. So that is the explore test for eighth grade and our ninth grade students, and then the plan test for possibly eighth, ninth, and tenth grade students. And you have the exact numbers of where we're purchasing those in your materials. And what they allow us to do is help prepare students for those tests that gives us an adjusted composite score for them so that we can predict where they might score should they get no additional interventions on their ACT preparation. But it gives us data then to help as they move into their high school career and be ready to advance on that ACT test and score better as they go forward.
And I just wanted to add, the reason that you're hearing this come before you this year versus previous years, that open schools provided this pay, this assessment for us and paid for it, they will no longer pay for this assessment. So we wish to look forward to get a vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Call for a vote. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
My son, yes? Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. School?
Yes.
Miss Cat?
Yes.
My son, yes? I'm voting yes. Thank you. Can I have someone to open Report 5314? Please?
I'm Mr. Williams?
Yes.
My son, yes? Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. School?
Yes.
Miss Cat?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So I have someone to open Report 5314.
I know that we open Report Number 5314, recommendations to use superintendent's evaluation tool.
Okay. Any comments, questions?
I will just share to the community that in the district, we're making some changes as it relates to how our administrators, our leaders, and superintendent is being evaluated. A few years ago, we made changes how our teachers were evaluated, and we started to implement a tool that was aligned with Charlotte Dammerson, which many of you have heard about. And School Advance is what we're moving for with our principals, assistant principals, instructional leaders in the Division of Instruction. And I always share with staff that I am going to align as possible to what they're doing. I don't want to ask anything about staff, but I'm not willing to do myself. And so with that, we've had a study session and review with our Board of Education, and there are five domains to this framework, which is in the report, that covers all of the various operations as well as relations needed to afford as an instructional leader and a role of superintendent too. So hopefully that supports this year's vote.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
And Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. School?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Miss Cat?
Yes.
My son, yes? I'm voting yes. Thank you. And I have someone to please report, open Report 5315, authorization to purchase for Southfield Lethrop again.
I know that we open Report Number 5315.
We have one test card here from the IDC department to explain this purchase.
Good evening. Again, as we continue to look at ways to improve and enhance programs in Southfield schools, we were looking at some of the academies at Southfield Lethrop, looking at ways that we could help support the learning initiatives that are going on in most programs. In working with the staff that, that work in those academies, we identified for the medical academy, a laptop card and some updated probes so that they could perform lab experiments, write lab reports, and essentially have an easier time completing, successfully completing the curriculum. So that is one portion of the purchase. The other was for the vocal music academy. In speaking with them, again, to meet the objectives of the curriculum, I was requesting an iPad card and a mobile smart board to be able to move around the room to better utilize the space. So those are the two purchases that were requested. Are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Call for the vote, please?
Yeah, before I do that, just want to apologize, Mr. George did not call your name. This has been printed for Eon, and his name was not written, so I sincerely apologize for not calling your name.
So just for the record, 5312?
Yes.
5313?
Yes.
5314?
Yes.
Now it's unanimous. All right, great. Report 5315, Mr. George.
Okay. Miss Cat?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. School?
Yes.
My son, yes? Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And it was me now. Well, the following three items do not require board action. Report 5316, a purchasing report. Report 5217, gifts to the board. And Report 5318, bill summary. Do we have a listing of the gifts to the board?
Yes, we do.
You have them? Would you like to raise them, Mr. Robinson?
Sure. The gift to the district. The following donation was provided to Southfield School. Mr. and Mrs. Craig and Catherine Heiko donated books to the James I. Smythe Library, Media Center, and Southfield Elementary School in August 2014. These donated items are valued at $93.30. Details of each item are provided in the app list.
And I have a book. I want to read them off. They're about 10 o'clock.
Oh, and thanks to these people for their generous gifts to our library as regularities and for giving good books for the library. Wonderful gift. Thank you very much. And now we proceed to public participation. The board recently adopted an amended policy on public participation. Only those persons with concerns related to school matters may participate during the public participation portion of a meeting. Comments are generally limited to three minutes. The board will listen to all comments, but may not respond during the meeting. Comments may be referred to an administrator or the superintendent for follow-up. As a matter of fairness, speakers with complaints against individuals are asked not to mention persons by name. Complaints concerning employees should be brought to the attention of school principals or other administrators before coming to the board. Your cooperation is appreciated. I have one card here from Harman Gunther. Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Would you please state your name and address? Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, everybody. My name is Harman Gunther. I reside in 1901 Greenspruce in Southfield. In recent mailings, we received this from the city. It is in terms of November 4th, the foundation shoot, with a little map inside to show you what streets are going to be repaired. If you need, have a bigger map, and plenty of copies. Southfield is in charge of 262 miles of roadway. This past winter, they were all decimated by continued tree saw actions, and obviously, our road was having to go through several times with old patches to repair them. We spent a lot of money on overtime. So because we cannot count on the counties to fix their own roads, as you can tell by Lodge, where they stopped just at this side of the roadway, not instead of going another half mile, which is in the works, by the way, and the state and that, and our legislators are still fighting over who's going to pay for what and how. So the city of Southfield, in an effort to repair their own streets, all 262 miles of them, is putting up the 99,100 shoe, which will last for 11 years. It comes down to 2.58 mil on our property taxes. I'm urging you to vote yes, because in my subdivision, which is in Crambrook Village, Section 11, we are in the five-year plan, the first five-year plan. The red lines show which area is going to be covered in that area, in that plan, first five years. So I am here to ask for your support to vote yes on this village, because our roads really do need it. Thank you. And if you like the copy of this map, come to me.
Yes, I'd like to remind you that our school bus is run on these roads.
Yes.
And it's very important to the school district. Well, if there are no more cards, we are now going to go into closed session. Mr. Boyd, Matt?
Yes.
Oh, Ford, Matt?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Joyce? Do you have any board matters for us?
No.
Mr. Williams?
I lost mine earlier. Just for the sake of time, I have to repair remarks, but for, late this in the hour, and the fact that we've got two more board meetings before the end of the year, and not expecting Plant Moran to be here tonight, there's some additional information I'd like to add to the end of your report, but I would like to say that congratulations to Mrs. Glonda, Mrs. Glonda Child, on her recent wedding. And also, don't forget to vote on Tuesday, November 4th. Vote, vote in at 7:00. And if you're in line before 8:00, you will be allowed to vote.
Thank you very much. Please encourage your children who are 18 to vote. It is very important to teach our students to vote. We, our ancestors, suffered, blooded, and died for that right, so we shouldn't take it lightly. But please encourage them to vote.
Yes, but only if they're registered.
They can't, one of them is registered, can't they?
No. Yes?
We have, we have someone that might have to go.
Okay. Well, we're going to go, oh, here's another card.
My name is Darrell Joyce. I live at 27903 Oakville, Leavon, Michigan. I'm here tonight actually to have my sister, Chanelle Williams, and brother Brian Joyce, who's in Montgomery, Alabama. Couple of, I'd say September, I was made aware that somebody thought I was running for, for office, and so upon looking into that, I found out it was my estranged father was running. And unfortunately, there was quite a few things on his platform that I was a little displeased with, so I find, being as far as having some integrity and honor, I wanted to make sure that at least the public Southfield and the voters have as much information as possible. I graduated from Southfield High in class of 2007, I'm sorry, in class of 2009, sorry, 97, Southfield High, went to Burning Middle School as well as Allen. Unfortunately, on his platform, he states quite a few things about his involvement in our childhood, and I wanted to make sure that we're.
No, 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 no. I do that.
Apologize.
Sorry. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Well, um, you know, well, now we are going to recess and go into closed session for legal aid for the superintendent. I'm sorry, but we will have to clear the room.